Helps if I use my microphone. Not used to being down here, thank you. Welcome to the Joint Public Works Advisory City Council Meeting, November 14th, 2023. We have one item today we'll be discussing, which will be our Water Reclamation Facility Program Phase One Recycling Water Implementation Strategy. With that, I will, I see that we have a quorum established, and with that, I will, if Public Works Director is ready, move on and begin the presentation. Thank you, Mr. Qualick.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Members of the City Council, and Chair of the P-WAB and Members of the P-WAB. It's good being here. We have, as the Mayor said, one item tonight, and that is the next steps on implementation of the recycled water project. I'll just make some brief remarks before I hand it over to Dan Heimel, the Project Manager for Recycled Water. This has been on the books for a few years in the city. When Dan came on as Confluence Engineering Solutions in August of 2022, we really began making headway, and we've done a lot of work in the past, I don't know, 14, 15 months on this project, and there's a slide on that that Dan will review on the work that we've done so far. I do want to point out that when we walked into this, we thought we were doing a full build-out project. That was just the basic assumption. And the project management team really tried to dial in exactly what do we need to do? What are the minimum requirements from our funding agencies that we need to implement to fulfill those requirements, to satisfy those agencies, but also to get the water benefit for the city during drought years? And so, we've spent many months pairing down the project, which ultimately will save costs to the rate payers, and we've spent many months negotiating with our funding agencies to make sure that we can do this. And we now have something to propose to the City Council that we believe is ready to go. We are asking for direction on this project because we are, what we want to do is implement a phased approach, where as part of the Greater Wharf Program, which of course includes the Water Resources Center Treatment Plant, the conveyance pipelines, and the recycled water facilities, we want to complete and close out that project, and so we're proposing a Phase One of recycled water to do that. Future City Councils can work on subsequent phases of the project as the city builds out, as the city builds out. We are not at full build-out right now, and so we are going to be proposing a phased project. The only other thing I'd mention is that we are looking for direction today because we are running up against funding deadlines. We did, we were successful in getting one funding deadline extended to 2026. We're about to get another contract amended to move to 2026, and that's three years from now, and it sounds like a lot of time, but as Dan Heimel will go over later, there still are many steps that we have to go through and hurdles we have to jump through for successful completion of this project. And so, we are looking for some direction tonight and some authority for the city manager to approve contract amendments for four consultants that are already, that the city already has contracts with. These are amendments to add scope so that we could do additional environmental work for the recycled water project, and that includes environmental, excuse me, biological, archaeological, environmental work, as well as hydrogeologic work. So with that said, I'm going to pass the mic to Dan. I will also mention, so Dan Heimel is from Confluence Engineering Solutions. He's the Project Manager. We also have Mr. Dave O'Rourke here from GSI. GSI is our hydrogeologist, and they are the author of the Basis of Design Report, and David was the lead on that. And we also have Damaris Hansen here from our Utilities Division. She's the Utilities Division Manager to answer questions after the presentation.
Point of order. Can we have public comment first, please? Is it, but isn't that what it says in the agenda? The public comment comes first?
I was going to allow the presentation and then have public comment. Would you like public comment before the presentation?
I just can't stay for a long presentation. So I didn't know how long it was going to last. Like, I have to go to work, and so I wanted to make my comments. So...
Mr. Qualick, how long do you think?
I would estimate the presentation will take about an hour.
If you will indulge, we will allow public comment.
I apologize if it's inappropriate. I just thought public comment came first on special agendas.
We only have one item before, so we were allowing the discussion first.
First, okay. I apologize. My name is Betty Winholz, sorry. I have written to the Council and the Board suggesting that, is there some way to tone this down, slow down the money, slow down the activity, because we're not sure where we're going and how much we really want. I know that there's been talk about, maybe can we do less wells, that kind of thing. It appears that the proposed locations of the injection wells imply that we're really going to be using this for saltwater intrusion rather than for drinking water. If we wanted it for drinking water, we would be putting the wells out at Chora Valley, which is a cleaner basin. And I don't know if that's been explored by Mr. Hamel and his company or not, and/or if it's been proposed to other regulatory agencies. There are two comments in the report that I would like to make a strong opinion about, and one is that please never sell our state water allotment. If you want Los Osos to use our pipe and buy from San Luis, that's one thing, but don't ever get rid of our best, our cheapest, our cleanest water, which is state water. And also, please do not blend the moral groundwater with our state water unless it's been through the brackish treatment. To blend it ahead of time kind of makes it dirty again, and it seems to me you would not want to do that. And then, I do want us to acknowledge that we're a very slow growth rate growing city. We've barely changed a few hundred populations since I moved here almost 40 years ago. So to achieve our build-out at 12,000 will take several decades. And so, even though that's the desire of the regulatory people, maybe that's a good reason for us to slow down. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donnelly, do you want to wait and go after, or would you like to go now? Because there's only one public comment, period.
Yeah, I can't stay for the entire time, so I'd like to go now. I'm Paul Donnelly, resident of Morro Bay. On page five of today's staff report, under the Recycled Water Program Implementation Recommendation indicates that three IPR injection wells will be implemented as part of the initial phase of the recycled water program. And on page nine in Table One, it says, just says multiple wells per the EPA WIFIA loans. Both WIFIA loans stipulate a minimum of four injection wells. So I asked, does the United States Environmental Protection Agency know what is being proposed today, and is so are they okay with just three? Is there some written documentation supporting this? Also, on page six of the staff report, it lists under next steps, prepare an updated recycled water management plan, coastal development permit, special condition number six. Special condition number six of the coastal development plan says, prior to construction of the WRF, well, that started in 2020, that the committee shall submit two copies of a recycled water management plan to the Executive Director for review and approval, not to coastal staff in Santa Cruz. And it also says in there that it is supposed to include injecting underground in locations that will maximize ability for groundwater replenishment and indirect potable reuse. There's no mention of non-potable reuse in these special conditions. Also, on page six, under next steps, it says, complete biological and archaeological surveys for the recycled water program, construction area. Was any of this done for the pilot well that was drilled last year? Was that well drilled with permission from that landowner? Were permits obtained prior to drilling that pilot well and for the removal of the vegetation that was once there? I did not see anything about acquiring easements presumably from Vistra. Would that, what would that entail, and would that delay the outcome of the project? What permanent easements does the city already have, and was the pilot well located within an easement the city has? Exactly where does the IPR pipe terminate that anvil installed? Did the city get the record drawings for where the pipeline construction actually placed the pipes? Who approved the changes to the pipeline plans? Section 2.03K of the city's adopted standard specifications requires that the city engineer approve changes before they're being made. Would the bike path be affected by extending the pipe to the proposed wells? And whatever became of the $9 million of grant money we got from the Bureau of Reclamation, I think it was supposed to help finance this phase. Thank you.
Mr. Donnelly. One else, Mr. Simons, you want to wait? You want to go?
Is, are you going to keep public testimony open so that after the presentation, I'll wait? Because I'd like to hear everything.
Thank you. With that, I'll close public comment and bring it back to staff.
Mayor, would you like us to answer any of the questions that came up during public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Qualick.
Yes. Okay. I tried to write down as many as I could, Members of the Council and P-WAB. Thanks for the opportunity to present to you on the recycled water implementation. There was a question about ways to slow down implementation of the project. The project team and city staff have had numerous conversations with the funding and financing agencies, and they have indicated that there is not flexibility to slow down implementation. They are very anxious for the city to move forward and complete the scope of work that it included in the grant and financing agreements that it signed for this project. Question about injecting wells for seawater intrusion, not drinking water? I think there's a misunderstanding there. The point of injecting water in the groundwater basin is both to increase the recharge to the basin, raise water levels, prevent seawater intrusion, and provide additional water for the city to extract. So it's a dual benefit by injecting the recycled water into the groundwater basin, and the proposed locations for that is strategically, those are strategically identified to provide that dual benefit of increased recharge and preventing seawater intrusion. There was a comment about don't blend Morro Basin groundwater with state water without running it through the BWRO. The city's drinking water rights permit allows for the blending of groundwater and surface water through the state water permit, from, sorry, the state water project, and that is being proposed as an operational strategy for the city to employ, both even before implementation of the IPR or and after implementation of the IPR, because it significantly reduces the operating costs of having to treat the Morro Basin groundwater through the brackish water RO facility, as well as it eliminates the losses of water that the city currently experiences of running Morro Basin groundwater through the brackish water RO facility, which can range anywhere from 25% to 35%. So it saves significant money and saves significant water and meets all the drinking water quality standards established by the Division of Drinking Water. There was a question about the number of injection wells, and we have information on this in the presentation and in the staff report. Each of the funding and financing agreements has different criteria for what the city needs to implement with respect to the recycled water component of the project. Some say multiple injection wells. The EPA agreement for WIFIA funding says a minimum of four injection wells in several places within that agreement. However, we have had detailed conversations with the EPA representatives, and they have agreed upon an interpretation that while it says four wells in the budget section, it doesn't say four wells in the project definition section. The project definition section says injection wells, and so they're interpreting that to mean more than one well, so wells plural. However, really, the constraining requirement for recycled water implementation is the 412 and a half acre feet of recycled water produced and used within the year following construction of the project that's included in the Clean Water State Revolving Fund financing agreement that the city has with the State Water Resource Control Board. So while the other agreements may allow the city to get away with less than four wells and meet the implementation requirements, the requirement to meet the 412 and a half acre feet likely requires a minimum of three wells and non-potable use, or additional wells without non-potable use to hit that target. With respect to the coastal development permit, special condition six, the city has submitted and has approved a recycled water management plan to the Coastal Commission. We have had numerous conversations with Coastal Commission about the city's compliance with all the requirements to the coastal development permit. The Coastal Commission is in agreement. The city is currently complying with all of those components and understanding that some of those previously submitted conditions need to, may need to be modified or updated as the project evolves. And so, we've had numerous conversations with Coastal Commission staff around that, including discussions around non-potable reuse. Coastal Commission has identified that they would like to see non-potable reuse as a recycled water use, and have actually requested that the city make recycled water available for non-potable reuse through a recycled water fill station as a way to comply with the agricultural mitigation components of the coastal development permit. Biological and archaeological surveys were completed for the test injection well. The test injection well was constructed within an easement that the city acquired from Vistra. The city has a permanent easement for that well and other wells in that area. The IPR pipeline ends. I don't know how really have a great landmark, but somewhere along the bike path, maybe halfway to two-thirds along the bike path from the intersection with Main Street and heading north from the intersection of Main Street towards the Tascadero Road. And the last question that I had was the $9 million in grant funding. That funding has been awarded. The city is, this funding, I believe, is in reference to the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation Title 16 grant. The city is currently in the process of submitting the requested or the required financial and other materials to get a grant award from the Bureau of Reclamation to be able to access that funding to fund the implementation of the recycled water program.
Thank you, Mr. Heimel. Does anyone have any questions? Now we'll resume. Thank you. Yes. Microphone? Thank you.
What sort of treatments required to bring the water up, the discharge to non-potable reuse standards?
So there are multiple different levels of water quality that can be utilized for what we call non-potable reuse, basically meaning recycled water for non-drinking water purposes, landscape irrigation, agricultural irrigation, other sort of irrigation-focused purposes. Disinfection, disinfected tertiary is the most common treatment level that we have for non-potable reuse, and typically that's associated with what we call purple pipe. I'm sure many of you have seen purple pipe and/or purple pipe installations in, say, City San Luis Obispo or other communities that have implemented non-potable reuse projects. That is filtered, tertiary means filtered. So primary is settling of solid, secondary is biological treatment, tertiary is filtered, and then disinfected. So it's a lower level of treatment than is required for potable reuse. The city's Water Resources Center has additionally beyond filtration, reverse osmosis, ultra- violent advanced oxidation processes that it would utilize for the potable reuse water.
What sort of transport, what sort of pipes are available to move that NPR water?
Yeah, it's a great question. That's something that the Recycled Water Program Team has spent a good bit of time on. So the city has two pipes leaving the Water Resources Center. One is the effluent pipeline that takes treated wastewater for disposal through the city's ocean outfall. The second pipe is what we call the IPR pipeline. That's the pipeline that takes the, what we call the advanced purified water, so that's the wastewater that's gone through those two additional treatment steps. And so, we've looked at ways to get disinfected tertiary water through the effluent pipeline. Unfortunately, there are a number of challenges associated with that. Those challenges include the fact that the city's safe system that treats wastewater during storm events doesn't go through the whole process, but does need to travel through the effluent pipeline. Additionally, the effluent pipeline carries the reverse osmosis concentrate from the advanced treatment process. So when the city is producing recycled water, advanced purified water, the concentrate from the RO process goes through the effluent pipeline. And then additionally, Culligan discharges a brine solution from its water softening regeneration processes to the effluent pipeline. And so, all three of those things create constraints about being able to get disinfected tertiary water through that pipeline. So some of the concepts that are included in the Water Supply Evaluation TM are utilizing the IPR pipeline to provide water for non-potable reuse opportunities.
So to use the one pipeline that would service both the potable and non-potable water, so they would have to turn one off and turn another on? So there is no existing second infrastructure to take potable water somewhere near where the injection sites are, the school or the park?
There is not, unfortunately. The way the system was designed, there's the ability to convey IPR water, and then there's the ability to convey water to the outfall for disposal. And so, the concept is, as proposed as a recommendation, would be to deliver IPR water for non-potable reuse. It's a higher level of treatment than would be required, but still would be a significant savings, both in offsetting the use of potable water, and the cost produced that IPR water is significantly less than the cost that is charged for potable water. And I appreciate the questions. I would just say that some of these issues are actually covered in the presentation, and I know Councilmember Lander may have a question, but I just wanted to call that out, that some of these things will be addressed and maybe clarified.
Back to the water, so the storm water, that's only during storms? Is that right? The storm drain water is?
Yeah, the way the Water Resources Center is designed, and Damaris may be on to that, but anytime, I believe, flows exceed 1.8 million gallons per day, water is diverted from the MBR, a membrane bioreactor, treatment process, well, the excess flow is diverted away from that to the safe system, which then runs through a safe filter device and then is blended back with the effluent from the primary, the MBR treatment system.
So the safe system is only an issue when it rains, with preventing you from being able to use that route?
That is correct. The current concern that the Division of Drinking Water Regulators, one of their concerns that they had was looking at, well, how would the city, say, disinfect that pipeline after, you know, a rain event? Because you're putting a lower quality water than, you know, the intended water quality water for disinfected tertiary. But yeah, no, that only occurs during high flow events associated with storms.
Right, and then if we had that all the time, we wouldn't even be in this situation. We wouldn't even be talking about this. Right? Because we wouldn't have a water situation.
Oh, yes. If it was raining consistently in a non-Mediterranean climate without extended droughts, then yeah, that would solve the problem.
Thank you. We'll resume the presentation. Thank you.
Okay, so the agenda for this presentation really is threefold. Yeah, thanks. We want to review the recycled water project drivers and the requirements, the requirements of the funding and financing and other constraints. We also want to present the Recycled Water Program Implementation Recommendations. As Greg described, the recommendation is for a phased implementation of the program, not going to full build-out, as we'll talk about in the presentation. And then, we want to outline the implementation next steps that are required to meet the funding and financing deadlines and deliver recycled water program. And so, really, our desired outcomes here are to develop a common understanding of the drivers and requirements for this project, present the recommendations, and get City Council with P-WAB's concurrents approval on the approach and the consultant contract amendments that are necessary to move the program forward. And I may talk a little quickly, just because I know the P-WAB has seen this before, and we've got a lot of information, a little bit on time, but if I need to slow down, please let me know, and if I need to speed up, let me know that as well. So the recycled water program drivers and requirements. The primary driver for this program is to develop a local drought-proof water supply to reduce the city's reliance on state water and meet the near-term water supply reliability and resiliency needs. So that's the water supply driver, and we'll go into that in more detail. The second requirement is to comply with the implementation of the funding and financing agreements that the city obtained for not just the recycled water program, but for the entire Wharf program, including conveyance and the Water Resources Center. And then, the third driver is to fulfill a requirement, is to fulfill City Council direction to incorporate recycled water as part of the Wharf program. So the city's water supply portfolio, as this council knows, currently primarily persists of state water. The city is heavily reliant on state water. Approaching 90% of its water comes from the state water project. And as we know, the state water project is vulnerable to extended drought and infrastructure failures. This is a complicated graph, but I'm showing this graph, and this is a graph, it's a key component of the analysis that went into the Water Supply Evaluation Technical Memorandum, which is an attachment to the staff report, that analyzed the city's water supply portfolio under varying hydrologic, including drought conditions. And just the key takeaway from this graph, and there's lots more detailed information available in the report, if you want to dig into it, but the takeaway from this graph is that the water supply modeling that was done for the city identifies that the city is vulnerable to running out of water in extended drought conditions. And actually, it's confirmed. In 2022, the city ran out of its own state water. The only reason that the city was able to continue to maintain water delivery to its customers is because it was able to access state water from the San Luis Obispo County Flood Control and Water Conservation District. And it wasn't just the city. Many of the other state water subcontractors in Slow County had to turn to the district for additional state water because of the extended drought that occurred in 2020 to 2022, and the very low, historically low annual allocations that were made of 20%, 5%, and 5% consecutively. And so, that's the water supply challenge that we're looking to solve with this project. And that is going to continue to be a problem because the district has indicated, this is a table that outlines who has what allocations of state water within San Luis Obispo County. So you can see at the bottom, the district has a very large unsubscribed allocation. That's the water that the city was able to turn to in the 2022 drought period. But the district has indicated that it's looking to put that water to other beneficial uses. We have multiple groundwater bases in Slow County that are in overdraft. We have other communities in need, and the district wants, it needs to find other ways to use that water, and it won't always be available as a backup or reserve supply for the state water subcontractors. And so, the city can't count on that water in the future. It's not planning on having that water in the future. That's not part of the water planning documents, and so that's why the city is looking into invest in a recycled water supply and program. The funding and financing implementation requirements, we talked about a little bit earlier in public comment. There are multiple funding and financing agreements that the city has, or well, it really has two financing agreements and is working on development of two grant agreements. Each of those grant agreements has requirements for the, what level of implementation is required for the recycled water program. As we discussed, some say multiple wells, some specify another number of wells. The SRF loan is really, we believe, to be the most restrictive in that the requirement to have 412 acre feet per year of recycled water use upon completion of construction. Additionally, each of these funding and financing sources has firm deadlines associated with the completion of construction for the, not just the recycled water program, but the whole Wharf program. But as we know, the recycled water program is the, really, the, not really the final, the other component is the decommissioning, or the two final components that the city is working on completing. And these deadlines, as Greg described, are, we're trying to get the funding and financing agencies to align around a September 2026 deadline, to give the city enough time to meet those deadlines. As we'll talk about later, there still are a number of steps that the city needs to take from where it is today to completion of construction of the recycled water program. And then finally, fulfilling council direction to incorporate recycled water program as part of the Wharf. There are numerous decisions by the council and the elected throughout the Wharf program process. process. We just highlighted a couple of key decision points and milestones in 2018, where the city certified the EIR for the WORF program, which incorporated recycled water in the Morro Basin, as well as submitted the SRF application, the largest financing component of the program. That included recycled water. So moving on to the implementation recommendations, and we've really broken this into four broad categories. So the first recommendation is kind of really restating what's been stated before, but it's injection of advanced purified water into the Morro Basin to provide a sufficient water supply during extended droughts by increasing the recharge to the basin, preventing seawater intrusion, and improving groundwater quality by dilution of nitrate concentrations in the existing groundwater. And with that, I will turn the presentation over to Dave O'Rourke with GSI. Dave will provide an overview of the Basis of Design Report, which is a key component of the work that the Recycled Water Program team has been developing to support the recommendation for the implementation of the recycled water program, and really is a culmination, and I'm probably stealing your thunder here, Dave, but of all the hydrogeologic work that has been done and supported the project and allowed the city to get where it is today.
Thanks for having me. I'm Dave O'Rourke. I'm a professional geologist and certified hydrogeologist in the state and a Morro Bay resident. I live about 50 yards that way, right around the corner. So glad to be here. So you, who's running? Okay. I'm going to just do a very quick run-through of the high points of the Basis of Design Report. I don't know if you've read it yet. I encourage you to check it all out. You know, this is a quick run-through of work that's been done to date. In 2017, there was initial feasibility study and groundwater model constructed to look at the implementation of IPR. In 2019, there was some chemical transport modeling that looked at seawater intrusion and the transport of nitrates and the effect that the IPR program would have on water quality at the city's extraction wells. In 2021, there was some field work done on aquifer characterization and the site selection. At the time, the two sites were the Narrows east of Highway 1 and the permanent easement we're now recommending. In 2021, there was also some extra groundwater modeling done on injection well locations along the coast to incorporate protection against seawater intrusion into the plans. And then for the past year or so, there's been a significant amount of field work done on the basis of design, installation of the pilot injection well, and modeling to support the basis of design. Just recently, like in the past year, we went through contractor selection, well design, well construction, aquifer testing. In November 2022, we had to take a pause for the state water shutdown. Then in December, we did an extended injection test. Originally, that was just going to be like a seven-day test. We decided to extend it to 30 days or more to try and get some extra information about it, and I will talk about that. Which brings us up, you know, the last six months, we provided the draft Basis of Designer Report. We had a third-party review and reviewed by the city, and that brings us to today. This is a figure from the BOD report that just goes to show you that this is not the first time that this aquifer has been investigated. Going back to the 80s, there's been a lot of drilling and soil borings and wells put in the ground for various reasons. There was characterization done for the power plant. In the early 90s, there were seawater intake wells installed along the Emparcadero and to deliver brackish water to the treatment plant. There has been borings for various construction activities around the old treatment plant. So for the last 40 years, there's been plenty of holes put in the ground. Now, not all of these are wells, I think it's worth pointing out. Some of them are just soil borings, you know, but we get the geologic information from them. So we reviewed all that stuff in the development of the groundwater model, and if you read the entire BOD, there's a, you know, every historical boring we could find is included. That was sort of, that was at the specific request of the Regional Board, but it's all in there. So the point of this slide is just to show that there's a lot of legacy information that we tapped into. There are like some detailed cross-sections, three cross-sections included in the report. This is just a sort of a simplified conceptual model of the geology as we see it, and it's basically the top of the, you know, the sediments and the aquifer materials at the top from the land surface down to like 30, 40 feet are fine-grained clay, not what you'd generally consider an aquifer. And then below that is sand and gravel that can produce a fair amount of water. So all of the wells that have been installed, the injection well, the city's, you know, extraction wells through the years, they all go through this top layer of clay and silt, and they produce from the lower sands and gravels. This is a figure that just shows you the background of water levels in the project area. There are four different, this is water levels from continuous monitoring devices in four wells. As each one shows the jagged lines, that's when the pumps kick on, so water levels decline, you know, immediately when the well goes on. But there are, you can see every November, water levels decline when the wells are turned on during the state water shutdown. During the extended period, about a six-year period there in 2021 and 22, you can see a longer period of time where the water levels declined. That was during the time of construction dewatering, during the construction of a pump station. I guess the main point I want to make on this is, you know, when the wells stop pumping, water levels recover pretty quickly in this basin. So it's not like we turn on the pumps, water levels go down, and it takes months and months and months for the water levels to recover. They come up pretty fast. This is a graph that shows total dissolved solids. It's, you know, to demonstrate the fact that there has been seawater intrusion in wells in this basin. Do I have a, I don't have an arrow, but the two on the right, the top two on the right are the wells three and four, the city's wells three and four. And you can see that spike in TDS there in the early 90s. You know, total dissolved solids there got up to about 3,000 parts per million, which is pretty salty. So the point is that it has happened here, and if it can happen once, it can happen again. So that's, you know, what's why we sort of incorporated the seawater intrusion barrier into the injection well locations. This graph shows the background of nitrates in the city wells. The nitrates are generally understood to be legacy nitrates from the agricultural fields just up, you know, to the west of, or to the east of Highway 1 there. Most of them peaked about 10 years ago and have been declining ever since. So that's just a little background on water quality. Okay, and I'm going at some of the work that we've done. We did injection testing at the well, or in the Vistri easement. We installed a injection well. As I mentioned earlier, we were going to just do, the original specs were for a seven-day injection test. We decided to do a 30-day test to get data. There's a monitoring well about 50 feet away, and we wanted to see if we could witness a change in water quality that would give us a real physical basis for an estimate of groundwater velocity. You know, that's a parameter that's usually not very well understood. You know, there are reasonable guesses made, made on transmissivity and hydraulic connectivity and porosity. But we did a 30-day test, and we monitored, put a transducer in the injection well and in that monitoring well to see if we could, if we could, you know, get a handle on when that water that we injected actually made it. Let me, so I guess I'll tell you the answer to that. We did see a breakthrough. What we, it wasn't as clear-cut as we thought it might be, but we did see a breakthrough. We got a groundwater velocity estimate under the conditions of the test of about four feet a day. So it took about, you know, it took about two and a half weeks to make it the 50 feet between the injection well and the monitoring well. And that's, Regional Board was, you know, they fully supported that effort. They liked to see that because other than that, you're just basing your transport time on modeling, but this is a good piece of data, physical data on groundwater velocity. We then moved into groundwater modeling. As I said, this model was initially constructed back in 2016 and 17. There's an appendix in the BOD report that documents like the history, the version history of the model. Every time we've come across new data, new field work, we've updated the model. So ultimately, we, so the scenarios that we incorporated here was we simulated an injection rate of 887 acre-feet a year through eight injection wells. And that is the full build-out, anticipated full build-out of injection that we're including in the permitting and application process. Then we did groundwater pumping, production of 900 to 1,000 acre-feet a year through eight wells, seven existing wells that the city owns, and then we used a new well to hit those pumping rates. The things that we were trying to achieve or demonstrate through the model is that we could operate this program. The modeled travel time between the injection well and the pumping wells has to be greater than four months. We have to avoid daylighting of groundwater at the injection wells, so, you know, water levels at the injection wells have to be kept below land surface. And also that we basically didn't, you know, dry out the aquifer. So we were looking to maintain 50% of saturated thickness in the aquifer during operations. This is an example of the figures in the, of one of the figures in the BOD report. Those black lines that go from the injection wells to, well, let me just back up. The injection wells are the big blue circles. You see, there's three, two sets of three along the, you know, south of the creek, and then there are two that aligned in a north-south orientation there along Tascadero Road. The lines that go from those injection wells to the pumping wells are what we call particle tracks. It's basically the path that the groundwater travels. And then those red lines are lines of equal travel time. Like I said, we're trying to maintain groundwater travel time of greater than four months. The three wells that are furthest to the right, which includes the pilot injection well, that's, those are the closest to the pumping wells, and those were the, you know, the most problematic to try to maintain that four-month travel time. But in the end, we did. So it's a little, it's four to five months travel time between, from those injection wells to the pumping wells. The other wells' travel time was, there was plenty of travel time. It's the three wells that are on the right side that, you know, had the fastest travel time. And, you know, with the phased implementation that's getting, that's getting discussed here, you know, if we only put two wells in and don't inject at this maximum rate, you know, that will slow down the travel time. This is, this is, this scenario is the, you know, conservative in the sense that we're injecting the full 887 acre-feet a year. To any extent that is backed off of for a phased implementation, those travel times will be reduced. So just to discuss the results of the groundwater modeling, we assumed maximum injection and pumping, you know, resulting in the shortest travel times, like I just said. We did maintain greater than four-month travel times. The closest ones were those wells closest to the bike path that are closest to the Highway 1 pumping wells. Like I just said, lower injection rates or phased implementation will result in slower groundwater velocity, higher retention time. We're going to continue to evaluate various operational scenarios and well locations for a phased implementation. What's documented in the Basis of Designer Report is that full build-out scenario, I believe. Yeah, that's pretty much what I just said. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so as Dave described, that the Basis of Design Report really looks at full build-out, and the reason for that is the permitting agencies, when they're looking to permit a project of this type, the Regional Board, the Division of Drinking Water, they want to permit the larger-scale version of the program that the applicant would be considering, such that if, and then the applicant would then have the ability to implement smaller versions of that. But if they want to expand on their program, they don't have to come back to the regulatory agency for a new permit, which is a lengthy and costly process. And so that's why the recycled water team took a strategy of having the Basis Design Report focus on the full-scale version that this project could be, and then transition to developing the recommendations for the first phase of the project, which we'll move into now. And so the current recommendations are, and we'll cover this in more detail, but the implementation of three injection wells, again, targeted around meeting the funding and financing requirements that the city has for the project. And that the city permit and have, get the necessary approvals to add additional injection wells to increase the program in the future as additional water demand becomes available associated with development, or there's other opportunities to get cost recovery with that additional water supply that the city has available.
Excuse me, can I ask a question?
Councilmember Lander, can you wait till we're done? Because, yeah, I just wanted to know how long the permits last.
So the permits, I do not believe have expiration dates. They do have renewal dates. So similarly, like the city's permit for the Water Resources Center, the city has an NPDS permit. That permit, I don't believe, has an expiration date, Demerit, but, you know, okay, but, yeah, so there are renewal requirements and reporting requirements, but the permits, as I understand it, don't just expire and you have to start over. And so switching back to the water supply modeling, if we add this recycled water resource of indirect potable reuse injection in the Morro Basin, what we can see, if used during extended drought conditions, this implementation of this water supply into the city's portfolio enables the city to have sufficient water during those extended drought conditions that were modeled as part of the water supply evaluation. What you're not seeing is that deficit that we saw in the scenario that didn't include recycled water occurring in 2022. And this is achieved both by, you know, obviously having an additional water supply available for the city that allows it to use less state water or stored state water, such that there's sufficient state water and recycled water supplies to get through the end of that drought The next recommendation focuses on the use of recycled water for landscape irrigation. Utilizing recycled water for landscape irrigation offsets the demand for potable water, which is a very high beneficial use for recycled water. Also, utilizing the IPR water for nonpotable reuse, that's a consistent use. It wouldn't be one that's necessarily just used in drought years. Obviously, in the Mediterranean climate that we live in, we have landscape irrigation demands every year, even in the wettest year, because demands every year, even in the wettest year, because, you know, most of our rain comes in a certain defined period of time. So this would allow the city to maintain the IPR treatment infrastructure in a readiness-to-serve mode, as well as produce recycled water to be used for landscape irrigation, which would be a beneficial use. And so the, the two primary opportunities that are being recommended today are as part of consideration for inclusion in the first phase are recycled water use at Lila Kaiser Park and at Morro Bay High School, highlighted here. These are two of the city's largest landscape irrigation water users. Providing them with recycled water would offset their demand for potable water supplies, and it would also increase the total quantity of recycled water used in addition to the recycled water that could be used for IPR. And these are really being selected not because they're the only water users, but they are large irrigation water users in close proximity to the recycled water infrastructure, the injection wells that the city needs to implement as part of its IPR program. And so applying that to the water supply model, we now add in purple, the, the non-potable reuse recycled water use. It, it helps by offsetting the, the demand for potable water, but as you can see, it's not as significant of a resource. There's still only limited demand for recycled water for irrigation at those two facilities. So it, it helps, it's a good piece of the puzzle, but it's not the majority of the recycled water implementation that we, that the city needs to do to meet the funding and financing requirements. And then lastly, we wanted to model a scenario where the city would run the IPR system every year, not just in drought years, because this, this provides potential cost recovery opportunities, as we'll discuss later. It also may be a requirement that the funding agencies have for the program. And so as you can see, with recycled water use every year, there are no deficits, and it does provide the city with surplus water supplies that it could consider utilizing for cost recovery. And so bringing that all together, the Phase One implementation of, for the recycled water program is construction of two injection, additional injection wells. One injection well has already been constructed. And then construction of pipelines sized for future phases to provide recycled water to those injection wells, Morro Bay High School and Lila Kaiser Park, targeting a recycled water program capacity of around 415 acre-feet per year to meet the requirements of the SRF financing agreement. Okay, so the next two recommendations really focus on how can the city leverage its existing infrastructure and funding and financing programs to limit the costs and the impacts to the community? So just a couple of the, the concepts that the Recycled Water Team has been working on that we wanted to share with you today. First is how to get the recycled water to the injection wells. As we talked about earlier, the city did obtain an easement from Vistra for the injection wells that could be utilized to deliver recycled water to the wells. However, that, that easement includes a significant amount of riparian habitat within Willow Creek and Morro Camp Creek. And so there are certain challenges as, associated with constructing pipelines in those types of areas. And so one of the things that the team has been working on is an IPR pipeline alternatives analysis that will allow it to take alternate routes to get water to the injection wells. And, and in this figure here, the, those two alternatives are shown in blue, there on the south side of the power plant. This is a, a shorter alternative that allows the city to get recycled water to the Embarcadero, but potentially requires cooperation from PG&E and Vistra for my adjustments to the easements to allow for the construction of those pipelines. And then the, the third alternative is shown as purple. That is an alignment roughly along Surf Street, an alignment that actually would run right along the street behind us here. This alignment is longer, but lies entirely within city-public rideaway. And so the city would have full control over the process for permitting and constructing the pipeline in this alignment. So what, one of the things being worked on is an analysis of these three different pipeline alignments, both looking at not only cost, but also environmental impacts and other property rights easement requirements. One of the key reasons the city is looking to get recycled water over to the Embarcadero is the opportunity to reuse existing infrastructure. So as the P-WAB and the members of council may, may know or remember, the city constructed seawater desalination infrastructure along Embarcadero Road, and that infrastructure, while the wells have been decommissioned, the pipelines are still in the ground and still in, in viable shape for use as a conveyance pipeline for the recycled water program. One of the things, as part of the conveyance project, the city reused a, a short section of the DSal feed line along Atascadero Road. So that's a good proof of concept, that this pipeline could be utilized to convey recycled water, not only along Embarcadero Road, but most importantly, across Morro Creek. Creek crossings are one of the most difficult things that we have to do when routing pipelines, as we saw with the utility bridge. And so by having that pipeline already crossing Morro Creek, that's a significant time and cost savings for the city. So by reusing this pipeline, the city has the potential to convey recycled water from the power plant all the way to near the entrance, the second entrance of the high school. And then some operational strategies as well. We talked, we referenced these a little bit earlier, but I, I think it's good to review them. So right now, the city really operates in sort of a, a binary water supply strategy, meaning it has state water, it takes 100% state water. And then when state water's off, it takes 100% groundwater from the Morro Basin. And due to nitrate contamination, the city has to treat that groundwater through the Brackish Water RO facility, which adds additional expense and loss of water associated with the reverse osmosis process. And so what's being recommended under IPR operations, when state water is available, is that the city would inject recycled water in the groundwater basin, extract that water through the existing groundwater wells after it's met the minimum travel time requirements. And then the city could blend that water with incoming state water at varying ratios to reduce the nitrate concentrations going into the king's tank. And by utilizing this operational strategy, the city could not have to run the groundwater through the Brackish Water RO facility and see significant savings associated with usage of Morro Basin groundwater. And so those were assumptions that were, were incorporated into the Water Supply Evaluation TM. And then finally, the fourth recommendation is maximize utilization of the awarded low-interest financing and grants and potential cost recovery strategies to limit cost impacts to city residents and businesses. And so this is a table, I think we've all seen a number of times. This, this outlines the, the four different financing agreements that the city has obtained or is in the process of, of obtaining in the, with respect to the SRF amendment. This equates to approximately $159 million of, of financing for the WORF program at interest rates of 0.9% or slightly lower in case of WIFIA. And so this has obviously been a key part of the city's funding strategy for the WORF program. Additionally, the, the city was able to obtain grant funding from four different sources that it's been awarded. And this grant funding equates to approximately $15 million in grant funding and funding that the, the city won't, won't have to pay back to the, the funding agencies. And so one of the questions that gets brought up a lot is, you know, what, what, how much is the recycled water program costing the community? And so we, we put together a kind of a comparison of the two different options that, you know, the city council was evaluating back in the early phases of the project. And that really, those were a WORF program without recycled water and a WORF program with recycled water. And we've kind of highlighted the benefits of, of each of those alternatives in green and red. And really, you know, the advantage of a program without recycled water is a lower purchase price, estimates of $120 million versus $160 million with recycled water. But the city wouldn't have qualified for that low-interest financing, there wouldn't have been grants available, and there wouldn't have, the, the city would not have the ability to produce recycled water in that scenario. And then, you know, the, the opposite of that for the WORF project with recycled water. And so if you, you try to quantify those, those savings in, in terms of numbers, first we look at what it would be, the repayment costs of those two alternatives. And so $159 million financed at 0.9%, you get a total loan cost of approximately $182 million compared to $120 million financed at 4.7%. And you got a total repayment cost of $223 million. So a $41 million savings just associated with the, the low-interest financing and the lower repayment costs. Then, you know, as we described earlier, you have the 15 and a half millions in grant funding that the city was eligible for. That, again, lowers the repayment costs. And then finally, you have the recycled water infrastructure that the city now has by selecting the, the option of the WORF program with recycled water. And then the recycled water project also provides the city with cost recovery opportunities. As, as I think both of these, these parties know, the city has a robust state water supply in terms of a, you know, the, the highest water service amount in the county, plus a healthy drought buffer that has provided the city with a mostly reliable water supply over the last several decades, 2022 notwithstanding. But it also, because of the variability of the state water system, leads to significant spills of state water and, as occurred in 2023. And so if the city, and it's not really just the city that's looking at this, it's all the state water contractors in Slow County, can come up with ways to sell surplus state water, that could provide significant cost recovery opportunities to reduce the rates to their, their water rate users. And that, that value of that state water varies. This table here kind of highlights estimates of the value during different hydrologic periods. Obviously, in wet years, that water has, has little value, you know, you'd probably have to pay people to take water in a year like we had in 2023. But in dry years, that, that water has significant value. And we saw people purchasing recycled water in upwards of $1,500 to $2,000 an acre-foot in 2022 during the, the peak of the last drought. Another key component of the water supply evaluation is an analysis of the different operating costs or variable costs associated with the city's different water supplies to help the city understand how utilization of recycled water projects will impact the water system operation, the waters, the water fund. And so these are the, the estimates of the cost of water on a per-acre-foot basis from the different water supplies that the city has available to it. It costs approximately, and these don't take into account the fixed costs, these are just the variable costs. How much does it cost to produce an acre-foot of that water supply? And so, and these are meant to be sort of an apples-to-apples comparison. These all get you to one acre-foot of potable water or one acre-foot of potable water that's offset through non-potable reuse. And so state water costs about approximately $300 an acre-foot to deliver. Groundwater costs about $35 an acre-foot to pump out of the ground, but to put it through the BWRO costs about $780 an acre-foot. The advanced purified water costs about $574 to treat at the Water Resources Center, and then another, we incorporated into there another 35 to pump that water back out of the ground. The advanced purified water to be provided for non-potable reuse costs approximately $539 an acre-foot. And then we don't add in the groundwater pumping costs because that water's directly delivered for landscape irrigation use. And so those cost assumptions, along with the different amounts of water that's utilized in the different scenarios included in the Water Supply Evaluation TM, are summarized in, in this chart here, where the, the green represents the variable cost, meaning how much it would cost the city to produce the water it needs over that 25-year period. The, the blue represents the potential cost recovery opportunities of selling the water it doesn't need over that period at an assumed value of $500 an acre-foot. And then the, the yellow bar represents the difference between those two, your costs, your potential revenues, and then your net variable costs. And as you can see, in, in the non-recycled water scenarios, the, the variable costs are, are slightly lower, but it also would also highlight that the city had a deficit in that scenario, so, and that's not accounted for, so it would be higher to fill that deficit. And then as you implement different amounts of recycled water, IPR, then IPR-NPR, and then IPR and continuous IPR, you can see the operating costs go up, but so do the cost recovery costs. They go up significantly, and ultimately to the potential of, of completely offsetting or even having a greater cost recovery than the cost to produce the water that the city Now transitioning to the program next steps, what, what does the city need to do to get from where we are today with these recommendations to completion of construction by September 20, 30th, 2026? So this is a, a figure that really highlights all the work, and this isn't all that, you know, obviously had to fit it onto one slide, but tries to highlight that all the work that's been done to get to where we are today for recycled water into the Morro Basin, and all the different project components, both hydrogeology, I had to do two columns for hydrogeology because of all the analysis that's been done on the Morro Basin, but also then the land use permitting work that's been done, the, the permitting with the Regional Board and the Division of Drinking Water, as well as the environmental work for the project, the biological and archaeological surveys and, and agreements that have been developed. And then finally, and see, all the funding and financing agreements that have been structured around the current program. And so that, that gets us to our recycled water implementation recommendations. And then the next slide, we transition to what are the, the next steps to get from where we are today to recycled water construction and meet the, the funding and financing deadlines? And so again, we broke it down into the different project components. We got a number of hydrogeological next steps, we've got design steps, we've got some land use permitting steps, Regional Board DDW permitting steps, and then the environmental and the biological/archaeological components, and then additional funding and financing steps, all to get us to recycled water facilities construction. And so here's a conceptual schedule that shows the current project team's estimate for how much time each of those steps will take and how they will align with each other, all again, targeting that final construction completion date of September 30th, 2026. And as you can see on the current conceptual schedule, it's really gonna, it's, it's pretty tight to get there, and so the, the city needs to really initiate those steps in the near term. And to do that, it needs support from its consultant team. And so included in the agenda packet here today are four contract amendments for consultants that have been supporting the city's WORF program. The first two really represent biolog, are for biological and archaeological surveys, to go out and survey the alignment and injection well locations and to delineate any biological or archaeological resources that may be there. This will help inform the design team for what is an alignment and where are locations that these wells can be injected without impacting those critical resources. And so that's really the, the critical path of activities that need to be initiated in the very near term. Additionally, with that information, it anticipated that the city will likely need to perform some additional Sequel work through development of either a supplemental EIR, or hopefully more likely, an, a addendum to the existing environmental documents that the city has prepared. And so this is a proposal to support the city in that work. I would like to point out that this is a conservative proposal. This proposal assumes that the city would have to do a full supplemental EIR. That would only be required if, if the recycled water program that's recommended for implementation has new or more severe environmental impacts. We are planning and anticipating developing a program that doesn't require that, but we want it to be conservative. And so this, this budget estimate is based on that full supplemental EIR. If the city can complete the additional Sequel work with an addendum, that cost would drop significantly to, from $180 to approximately $40,000 to $45,000. And then finally, additional hydrogeologic services support. There are still hydrogeologic analyses that need to be done to support the final permitting through the Regional Board, the Division of Drinking Water. We need to, we, we believe that it would be prudent to do an additional injection test of a longer duration to, as a good due diligence measure, just to further fine-tune the estimates' travel time. And, and then there's also some additional modeling that'll need to be done in support of the permitting efforts and some well siting. And so that almost concludes my presentation. Finally, just the recommendations are for, to get direction for implementation. to get direction for implementation of a phased approach to the recycled water program, and to move forward in environmental permitting and design, and then approval of the consultant contracts for KMA, Far Western, Rincon, and GSI.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm going to go to questions in just a minute and turn it over to Chair Beal, but first I will open public comment, Mr. Simons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. An extended body? Oh, my God, there's so many of you and so few of us on this side. Thank you all for coming, and obviously, this is the culmination of what sounds like 18 months of considered work on this. That is a problem, because for 18 months, we've been basically unaware of what's been going on. And I think that it would be prudent to avoid public outcry, to build a little buffer so that the public can get up to speed. And I think that trying to approve all these contracts that seem to have a lot of variables in them tonight would be inappropriate, and would be accelerating the problems that you're likely to have coming in the very near term. I know that you currently have a RFP out for a rate consultant, which sends a pretty strong message that there's a Prop 218 rate increase on the horizon. Unless you want to see the same kind of rate increase protests that we had the last time around, I would really suggest that you get some real public awareness started on this whole process. Specific to the proposals, and there was a lot of new information, there appeared to be a lot of new information that staff presented that didn't seem to be in the rather comprehensive, dare I say, department or redundancy department reports. As a draft report, I would like to see the following additions prior to submission for review and permits by the regulatory agencies. I'd like to see preliminary discussions and evaluations of the potential for direct potable use for the reclaimed water. This is a process, some people that are detractors call it toilet-to-tap. Quite frankly, Los Osos has been operating for the last 30 years in a toilet-to-tap system, and has only recently converted that to a sewer treatment plant and a injected, or not even injected, reclaimed water process. This could significantly reduce the need for more wells and secondary processing at wells. Hopefully, there would be a net cost benefit with direct potable. And the rules that are going to affect direct potable are due to be out January 1st. So, I would hate to see us spend millions of dollars, or push ourselves in the direction of spending millions of dollars without looking into direct potable when it is so close on the horizon. Establishment of the potential of Choro Valley water. This is the historic water source for Morro Bay. It was abandoned because of upstream nitrate pollution caused by the Minns Colony. That's been corrected. I submitted to the council a 2014 water report that verifies that. Look at the, look for injection sites in the San Bernardo Creek portion of the Choro Valley, because establishing that would be a lot cheaper than trying to build new wells. Madam Mayor, could I have a few more minutes? I've got just a couple lines to finish.
Make it quick.
Thank you. Establish a working relationship with the Los Osos water purveyors via discussions with the Los Osos Basin Management Commission. This, I think, is critical, and it's been overlooked. This might involve delivery of both state water and WORF water, reclaimed water. Los Osos Basin is huge, and it's in significant deficit. Our Morro Basin is tiny and can't really hold that much water, as evidenced by how quickly the water levels drop whenever pumping starts. I think that it would be possible to convince the lenders that our delivery of reclaimed water to support a neighboring community that's in serious deficit of water could be considered a reasonable use of our reclaimed water. So if we could make a deal with Los Osos to, even if we gave them our reclaimed water, if they built the pipeline, it would be mutually beneficial. While we still have a large amount of reclaimed water, that could help refill the Los Osos Basin. I think they're thousands of acre feet short, and we could provide that for them very quickly. As the reclaim process evolves, we could share our potable water and our state water, or mixed with Los Osos. It would be important to see if our providing reclaimed water to Los Osos will qualify as a reclaim per the loan agreements. That's basically what I've got. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. Public comment is open on this item, on the agenda only. EGP, do we have anyone in the queue?
Hi, Barry. We have nobody in the queue with their hands raised.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council and commission. And Chair Beal, if you'd like to start with any questions with your commission, I'll let you do that before council.
Okay, thank you. And I would also just like to note for the record that we do have a quorum of public work advisory board members present here today. I don't have a question right at the moment, so I'd like to ask other board members if they would like to have any discussion or questions.
Okay. A bunch of questions kind of popped up. When you negotiated these contract amendments, roughly what was the labor and materials per amendment? Is that information available somewhere? Who negotiated those, Greg?
Thank you for the question. The board member, Simons, were referring to the consultant agreements?
Yes.
Those were reviewed by city staff and approved.
Okay. Do you know roughly what the labor and materials breakdown was for these amendments? Was it mostly labor that, or was there some actual materials?
I'd have to look back, but it was mostly labor.
I noticed that the archaeological, is that, so that's basically looking at all the potential pipelines, or just the expected pipelines?
So, it's looking at those three different pipeline alternatives that were shown there. A large component of that pipeline is in common, though, you know, but it is looking at those different alternatives to give the city, so the city can be better informed when making a decision on which alignment to pick.
You were saying that Rincon consultants was basically for preparing a supplemental EIR, is that correct?
The proposal includes development of a supplemental EIR, and that's what, and it has an associated budget. However, we have been discussions with them that, you know, if a full supplemental EIR is not required, then the cost would be significantly lower. And they've quoted us that lower cost.
Could we flip the thing where we would have the approved amount would be the lower cost, and if we decide we need to have the, if we decide we need to have the full supplemental EIR, have that as an option? Would that be a feasible way to approach it?
I believe so.
Okay.
That might require additional approvals. I defer to the city on that.
Yeah, if the question was to take a less conservative approach and then come back if we needed additional scope.
Negotiate both at the same time, but start with the assumption that we'll do the less expensive, and then if we need to do more, then the city can award the option.
Yeah, I would argue that that is the approach we're taking, except we're getting the approval in advance, so that in case we need the additional scope, we can get that signed off.
So you'll only authorize the amount to start with, and later on, we could increase it if we have to?
We would only approve the scope if it was necessary.
What are the interest payments we expect to be making? I mean, you got principal and interest. Do we have an idea what the interest, annual interest payments that we're going to be making on these loans?
I don't have that breakdown in front of me. What I do know is that, starting in 2026, when we begin all debt service payments, we'd be looking at $5.6 million for the next 30 to 35 years.
One of the nasty thoughts I had in there is, what's going to keep LA from stealing our water?
If we're talking about state water, you know, we have contractual protections in our contracts that we have access to the 13, 113 acre feet per year allotment, so long as the water's there, that the state has the water.
Yeah. And so, what I'm, so at what point would the state consider having an extended period of 5% allotments, 5% of your allotment?
In a drought scenario like we had in the past, I mean, that's exactly what happened. We had two 5% years in a row, in 2021, 2022.
And is there any discussions about, okay, what happens if the aridification, you know, the drying of the western United States continues, and instead of two years, we get five years, or something like that?
Yeah, I mean, part of the, that's, it's a good question. Part of the impetus of this project is anticipating those sorts of events becoming more frequent and more severe. If, under a scenario where, let's say, the city or the state doesn't get rain for 10 years, or snowpack for 10 years, I mean, we're all leaving California. So, there's a point at which, yeah, if the water's not here, then we can't live here. But the idea behind recycled water is that we have a valuable resource that, once we do treat wastewater, we can keep it here. We can retain it and inject it into the ground. So.
Okay. And then, the other thought which was coming to me, so we recycle this wastewater, certain percentage of it goes through the system, is reused, and a certain percentage of it is wasted, or has to be discharged to the ocean. What is that percentage that goes to the ocean?
So, there's approximately, I think it's 15 to 25% loss of water through the reverse osmosis process. And so, that is roughly, just 20% is a good number.
So, the city, if this city stuck, or if the state stuck us on basically 5% for extended period of time, we would need at least 300 acre feet a year in order to make up the shortfall?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's not designed to be a completely closed-loop system, you know, and it's not the space station, unfortunately, where you recover 100% of your water. Yeah, so that, the city would still need to have additional water supplies, whether that be state water or native yield from the Morro groundwater basin.
Yeah, and so, right now, we can expect it looks like maybe, was it 200, 300 gallons, 2 or 300 acre feet out of the Morro Creek? Is that right?
I think, on average, the city's pumping approximately 100 acre feet per year out of the Morro Basin. It has permitted up to 581 acre feet per year out of the Morro Basin.
Okay. Let's see, other thoughts. Does the county control Lake Nociamento storage?
The county, I do not believe, controls Lake Nociamento storage. Lake Nociamento is controlled by the Monterey County Water Resources Agency. The county does have water rights to Lake Nociamento, and does get water from Lake Nociamento since the construction of the Nociamento Water Project. Slow County has the first-in-last-out rights to that water, so it's a very robust, reliable supply, and historic hydrology has always provided Slow County's.
Is there any option to take some of our water and store it in Nociamento, rather than let it spill?
That would be difficult, given the current water conveyance infrastructure that we have in the county currently. There may be some way through exchange agreements. I think, none of the current Nocci water participants are state water contractors, so there wouldn't be a direct route there. But through creative exchanges and transfers, there's a potential there. Though, Slow County doesn't have any storage rights in Lake Nociamento, it does have an allocation. It does not have the ability to store water in there year-over-year under the current contracts.
Okay.
We can come back to you if you'd like. We only have about 30 minutes to get all the way around, so if we can.
Okay. No, I think, I think those were all the questions which I had noted.
Thank you.
Dan, maybe these are for you, but I'd like to understand a little more about the production of the injection wells. Can, I'd like to understand a little better about adding more pressure to push more water into the injection wells versus drilling more wells. Is that an option?
Yeah, it's a great question. You can get more water in the injection wells if you inject under pressure. You don't have to inject under pressure. I mean, literally, the water falls into the well based off gravitational head. We actually, city staff and I just got back from a tour from Orange County Water District's groundwater replenishment system. It's the largest indirect potable reuse system in the world. I highly recommend any of you have an opportunity to go tour that system. It's an impressive facility, and they've been operating an IPR program since the 1970s, I want to say, 60s potentially. And we had the benefit of spending three and a half hours with their lead hydrogeologist, and, you know, he said that, yes, they do operate under pressure. They don't like to, because that's just putting more pressure on the well itself, potential for breakthrough locally at the injection well site. But it is possible.
And?
And you could get more capacity by doing that, yes.
Is it cost-effective?
Assuming you're not impacting the integrity of the well, and it's working, it's definitely cost-effective, because you're just getting more capacity out of a single piece of infrastructure. So, it's something that could be tested.
The other question that I have to want to understand a little better is, we talked a lot about the IPR pipeline that we put in during the pipeline work, and potentially using it for non-potable reuse water. Is there the potential for using it for both water applications, for injection wells and for non-potable water with flushing and testing and cleaning? Or do we need to have a separate pipeline for the non-potable water?
We've asked that question of the Division of Drinking Water. Yeah, they were initially pretty concerned about the dual use of that pipeline for non-potable and potable uses. You know, they're still working on a formal response, but, you know, they are very protective, I think, as the city saw during the construction of the conveyance project, of separation offsets of waters of different quality to prevent potential cross-contamination.
Mr. Qualick, I just was going to ask if you would like to explain, we had a revised agenda that had a red line through it. I was wondering if you'd want to speak to that for us.
Thank you, Chair Beal, for that. We had an incorrect amount, an incorrect dollar amount for the not-to-exceed on the Far Western contract, and that's because, I believe it was a carryover from a previous contract amendment that we were basing this new contract amendment over, and I believe there was an error there. And so, we went back and all the contract amendments and corrected that.
Thank you. And I should have said it was a red line to the staff report, not the agenda. So, thank you.
No problem.
Let's see. I imagine that the question's been asked before, and there's probably a simple answer, but there's been a lot of inquiry as to the alternative site for the sales being the Choro watershed. What would be the explanation as to why that site is not the current site, if such a simple answer is possible?
Yeah, this is a question that has come up a number of times, and, you know, has been analyzed and documented in the previous planning and decisions made to move in the direction of the Morro Basin. And, you know, I would really point people to the 2019 final water reclamation report, you know, for kind of the documentation of that decision point. But, you know, in reading that report, and, you know, just my understanding of the water world, there's three primary there's three primary reasons why the Morro Basin was selected over the Chorro Basin. The first one has to do with infrastructure. The city doesn't have a treatment, doesn't have treatment infrastructure available in the Chorro Basin to treat for nitrates. The city does have a brackish water RO facility in the Morro Basin that allows it to treat for nitrates. And so that provides the ability for the city to provide water without nitrate contamination. Second, there are a number of customers that are directly connected to the pumping lines for the Chorro Basin, meaning that before it gets to the city's water storage facility, the entry point of the city's water storage facility, that water goes directly into multiple homes and residences in the Chorro Valley. And so you would need to install nitrate treatment upstream of that. So it would be challenging to do a centralized nitrate treatment system. The second primary reason is, has to do with the lack of illegal framework to manage pumping in the Chorro Valley. There are a number of other pumpers that pull water out of the Chorro Valley, agricultural users, rural residential users. Not to say that it would be a problem, but, you know, there is not necessarily a guarantee that the water that the city would put into the basin would be available for city use downstream due to the lack of ability to regulate other pumpers in that basin. And then the third reason that's cited in the 2019 report is the environmental restrictions associated with the extracting water from the Chorro Basin. While the city does have a water rights permit for the Chorro Basin, that water rights permit limits the city from being able to extract water anytime the flow in Chorro Creek drops below one point four CFS. And so, again, it's a factor outside of the city's control that limits the city to, the city's ability to access that water. And unfortunately, you know, the times, the periods when the water in Chorro Creek drops below one point four CFS are the extended drought periods, summer periods, when the city would be looking to utilize that IPR water supply. Yeah, I just have another, a couple more points to add on that. I think this question deserves treatment, because we do get, ask this question a lot. I know folks in the community are interested in this. There's a belief that the city has several wells in the Chorro Valley that may have been through at one time, but the city only has one extraction well in Chorro Valley right now. Some of those were dismantled a few years ago, so we do have one inactive well. So that means that we'd have to construct not only injection wells, but also extraction wells there. It's also not, in terms of proximity, we already have an IPR line that goes all the way to the Morro Basin. We don't, we don't have that in Chorro Valley. And maybe the biggest reason why we're not taking this direction right now is we'd essentially have to start the project all over. We'd have to begin a new environmental and just do everything from the start. And given our timelines, it's just not feasible.
I get it. Thank you for the confidence of answering us, actually more than I expected. Second question, is there any, even kind of a ballpark figure as to what a non-potable recycled water conduit system might cost? So we have some idea of what we're talking about, getting water to the high school and to the, into that park?
Yeah, so it basically, to add the non-potable use component to the IPR program requires extending the pipelines beyond the current termination of the D cell intake feed line. And I want to say that it's approximately two thousand feet of additional pipeline that would be required, plus connections to those users, though those users currently have cross-connection backflow prevention already, because they, at times, can receive raw groundwater. So I would think it's probably five hundred thousand, less than a million dollars to add those additional users, if I had to put a rough number to it.
A third question, I only have two more questions. Third question, much of your financial analysis revolves around Morro Bay having portable recycled water so that it could, in fact, sell some of the slow water that it doesn't use to other users and recoup some of the, some of the cost. Is there any infrastructure currently available that would allow that? Say, say the plant was in operation, we had excess water, and we wanted to somehow convert that to money? Or does it involve lots of infrastructure investment that we, or is it simply a matter of telling the state to send water somewhere else?
Thank you for the question, board member in Graffia. So our, our financial projections of what this is going to cost and how we're going to pay for it does not rely on the sale of any of the city's water. That is an opportunity that we believe the city should explore, but it's certainly not something that we're relying upon. The infrastructure that's there is, you know, we have a state water pipe coming into town, and because of that, we have an opportunity to set up transfer agreements, exchange agreements, and things like that. So those tools are available to the city, so that the city could sell water specifically to other state water users.
So it could be done without any physical construction? It would simply be working agreements to turn valves on, turn valves off?
Yes.
The final question I have, and this is more of a, I'd like someone to actually ease my concerns, because I see in the future, Morro Bay becomes essentially water self-sustaining by virtue of having the reclamation plant in operation and injection shells and all that. And that may be due to the good planning and the affluence and the good fortune of Morro Bay. But I can imagine elected public officials from other parts of the state who represent less affluent areas, areas that are desperately need of water, where their aquifers are being drained and their fields are staying fallow, and they're going to say, Morro Bay has adequate water by virtue of its reclamation plant. Water, Morro Bay acknowledges that it has excess water that it doesn't need. In the interest of equity, we should be allocating some of our state water to these areas that desperately need it, and allocating less water to Morro Bay. Now, I know we have contracts, but these contracts in no way resemble anything I've ever seen as a legal contract. The state has the power to say yes to a hundred percent, seventy-five percent, five percent, or, in fact, nothing. So how do you relieve my concern that that might not happen? I mean, is it possible? I mean, I just.
I mean, I, I think that it's possible, and there is probably some precedent that, you know, the city could look to. So in 2022, as we've talked about extensively, the extended drought, my understanding is, or my recollection is, the Department of Water Resources issued state water with a health and safety need prioritization. And so that it did reach out to agencies to provide information on how dire their water situation was, and then prioritized the availability of that water to utilities that needed that water to meet health and safety needs. And so there, the state has had, you know, has had to step in and prioritize who gets the water, but, you know, I think it has done it on a very, you know, an equitable basis, focused on providing health and safety needs, you know, for the residents of California.
So, again, there might come a time when, again, I don't know how to characterize it, other than this state water that Morro Bay doesn't need to use, that might not be, might not be there in the midterm or long-term future for Morro Bay to make, to monetize, if you will. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just to follow on to that, that I don't know that it would take water that the city had already allocated or utilized away from it, but, you know, it may come into account in future allocations. But I would also say that the city is very water-conscious in terms of, I mean, the city has very low per capita water demands already, and I would think that that would factor in pretty heavily within any sort of prioritization of water. It's not like there's lavish lawns and, you know, high per capita usage here in the city.
Councilmember Ford, would you like to start off? Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mayor Wicksum, and I also want to thank Chair Beal for running this meeting. And I want to thank staff for being available for, well, not only writing this comprehensive reports, but also being available for, you know, I know I asked like an hour and a half's worth of questions since we've received this report. So I just wanted to say thank you. I really only have one, well, pretty much all the questions that were asked here were covered, either questions I had already asked previously and thought, oh, I should probably ask it in public, or came up during this presentation and then was asked. So it pretty much leaves me with something that I think that our community and maybe our fellow members here might be interested in hearing. You know, if we were not to move forward with this phased approach and do only three injection wells, and we want to move forward with the full layout and the full plan, if we were to, if we were to go with the three wells and stick with that for now, because it's all that we need, that we believe we need for our current population, what opportunities do we have in the future for funding as far as, because we had talked a little bit about, you know, maybe the grants that we currently are receiving, there may be opportunity to reapply for those grants, or, you know, if you could just kind of explain financially what we could be looking at in the future if we don't approve all six wells and we just go with three, and then later on, another council, another staff is faced with having to figure out how to fund the additional three wells when that need comes about? So I know that we don't know a hundred percent, but have an idea of what we can look at in the future.
Yeah, no, that's a good question, you know. Yeah, there's been a lot of talk of completing the scope of the current funding and financing agreements, closing that out. That, that wouldn't limit the city to the opportunity to pursue additional funding. You know, it would, both new funding opportunities would present themselves to new programs, and then even one of the programs that the city is currently in, the Title XVI program with the Bureau of Reclamation that provided nine point three million dollars. That program allows agencies to come back at subsequent funding opportunities and request additional funding, or project costs have gone up, new recycled water scope, and so that opportunity would be available. And then I would just also add that I think the city would be in a very favorable position when requesting additional funding, because it would already have a recycled water treatment plant that was constructed, it would have a recycled water delivery infrastructure, and so it would be shovel-ready for expansion of its recycled water program, which is typically one of the key criteria that the agencies are looking in for when they make these awards, because they have mandates to get this funding out, to allow projects to move forward. And so if you can show that you're ready to go and get shovels in the ground, then you typically score higher.
Thank you, Mr. Heimel. That was one of my big concerns when I was approached with this idea of only doing three wells. I was like, oh, my gosh, we have such great funding right now. What does that mean in the future if we don't try to push forward with this? And so I appreciate you clarifying that for me when I originally asked, and then doing it again tonight for everyone. Because I was, because I'm so late in this, I really don't have any other additional questions. I'll let others ask questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford, Councilmember Edwards. Good break, and help, thank you. Councilmember Barton.
Oh, there we go. No additional questions, but I wanted to thank you for the additional explanation of this project. I've heard this now about two and a half times, and it's, it's starting to really click. And so I really appreciate the extra time that's been taken to bring the community along with us, so thanks.
I had two things which I wanted to ask about. One is a statement about the Chorro Creek water. When I first started, two thousand fourteen, and for about five years, they were looking at how to define that one and a half CFS with, I think it was Bureau of Reclamation, maybe DWR. It was running about a million dollars just for the facilities to measure it, and they still hadn't agreed on how they would actually do that. So it just, that one and a half CFS in Chorro Creek has been very, very difficult to get defined, how to measure it. The other question is, at what point would we do a supplemental rate study to see if there's any savings to the water, water supply charges in the future?
Oh, am I correct? One was a statement and the other is a question, so I guess, Mr. Qualick, the answer to that rate study question, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, advisory board member, Erwin. Can you, can you restate your question about the rate study?
At some point, we have to, you know, study our rates, and we have to report them to the state and to the population, is, are they reasonable? And I was wondering when the next time we would be doing one of those rate studies normally.
Thank you for the question. So the city currently has out an RFP to do a rate study. I think it closes in a couple of weeks, so shortly.
Councilmember Landrum.
I so appreciate you, all of the MPWAB being here and asking all the questions, because this is not our forte, obviously. I just had a couple of questions, and this may have been answered, it might have, I'm just not clear. So if we're selling state, if we decide to sell state water, doesn't that limit our ability to recharge the Morro aquifer?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Landrum. We would only sell surplus state water, so we get around thirteen hundred and thirteen acre-feet a year as an allotment, but we only have delivered between a thousand and eleven hundred acre-feet per year. So that means we have around a two or three hundred surplus in terms of acre-feet every year. So there would be an opportunity to sell that, should the city choose to go down that.
Okay, and that's all before total, full build-out? Because at full build-out, you would need all your water, right? And, and the, you would need it to recharge the aquifer and pull it back out, right? Or am I?
Yes.
Yeah.
You're correct. I'm giving current figures, so if the city achieves the theoretical full build-out, then we may need all the, all the acre-feet that's coming through the state water pipe.
So when you make these, these agreements, if you do, are they, are you, are you, are you required to guarantee that for a period of time? Or are they like, whenever we want to give it to you, we'll give it to you? Or how does, how do those things work?
Yeah, thank you for the question. So I just want to be clear that the city, or that staff isn't proposing to set up any kind of agreements right now, but only that after this project is built out, that we would look at opportunities, really, to cost recovery through sale of water. If we did do agreements, you know, I would never recommend that we made some kind of permanent agreement to hand over our water to some other entity. Very likely, it would be based on the year, and that's why in the staff report and in the presentation, there's some discussion about how the market has different prices for acre-feet of water depending on if it's a dry year or wet year. And so it, to me, it would almost be more like we would use some sort of broker, perhaps the county, if they're interested in being in that position, to decide whether to sell water based on, you know, the year, our water supply conditions, and the price we can get for it.
Okay, thank you. And if our population significantly decreases, like it's trending currently, how long, oh, yeah, how does that affect things? Does it, will it throw all these numbers off, or?
I mean, so, I mean, if the population decreased, and presumably that would impact the amount of wastewater that was available, obviously, there'd be less wastewater for the city to be able to treat and inject, but that would correspond with lower water demand. So, you know, things, water demand and wastewater demand
Right.
tend to move proportionally unless there's a significant portion of the water demand is for outdoor irrigation, which, you know, we don't see a high percentage in Morro Bay relative to other communities.
It wouldn't affect our loan or anything like that, our funding?
I mean, the city would need to, has a reporting requirement that says that it is supposed to meet these recycled water use targets, you know? And if the city was unable to have enough water to meet those targets, then it would have to report that to the state. I think estimates of right now, based on the wastewater flows the city currently have, it could probably produce somewhere around six hundred acre-feet per year. So probably, it would require relative. So probably it would require a relatively significant decrease in population, somewhere around 20%, 30%.
Okay. Is there any way to bring down the variable cost of the brackish water thing? Could you do solar, or is there any other things that we can do?
There might be some operational improvements. Some RO facilities have energy recovery, where you capture, when you, if you have a multi-stage RO process, you send the water under high pressure through the first stage, that the concentrate side stays under high pressure, and you can sometimes recapture that energy through a small hydroelectric device. But outside of that, unfortunately, not. The BWRO, reverse osmosis is, you know, it's not an inexpensive treatment process, but there may be opportunities.
Or is there any new technology?
There, I mean, the RO membranes, and actually, another tidbit we learned on the Orange County Water District who have improved significantly since, you know, the 1970s in terms of how much pressure is required to push the water through the membrane, but, and so there are incremental improvements in the technology, but I'm not aware of any significant, and the membranes at the BWRO are relatively new, I believe. So they, you know, fortunately, fortunately, you know, likely already incorporate that newer technology.
Okay, and are any of the routes to irrigate the high school, it looked like there was like a square around the high school of pipeline? Do any of those routes coincide with the no longer being used Cayucus pipelines? Could we use those?
Yeah, so that square, and we tried to change the color in I think this latest presentation to help illustrate that. That square really just represents, here's a general area where you could use recycled water. That line is not intended to represent a pipeline, so I'm sorry. That was, you know, my bad for the coloring on the previous presentation. The really, the benefit of connecting the Lyman Kaiser and the high school is they already have separate irrigation systems in place. And currently, the high school irrigation system connects at what I call the second entrance to the high school, or the western entrance. So you really only need to route water to that entrance to get water to the entirety of the high school's irrigation system. They already have plumbing inside the high school to convey that water to the ballfields and other irrigated areas.
Okay, I have two other things. So the population in Morro Bay hasn't changed that much in my lifetime? So, and what did the city do before state water? And if we've shown these historical drought periods, how did we survive through those periods? And we probably used more water.
You know, I was here in high school, well, I guess I was probably junior high before state water. Fortunately, I wasn't that focused on where my water was coming from at the time, but I, you know, I believe it was a combination of water from the Morro and Chorro Valleys before the significant nitrate contamination that occurred associated with upgrading agriculture.
Okay, thanks. And then, this is kind of a comment, but it would be helpful and also interesting, on those, I don't know, are they called flow charts? Those charts that you showed that with all of the different, like hydrogeology, all those different columns, if there were costs included with each of those columns, like, you know, what were the costs total in each of those columns? And then there's a future one, too, and it would be nice to see that.
Yeah, no, that's a great idea. We can work on putting that together.
Thank you, Councilmember Landrum. We only have a few minutes left, and council does need to take an action on this item. Again, I want to take a minute and thank all of the PWEB members. Couple of the things, being on the subcommittee for this, I've had the opportunity to receive a lot of the information as it's come along, but we've all watched or attended the last PWEB meeting that you all ran, and I think it left us with a lot of questions, which is why we asked for this joint meeting. When we're being asked to approve changes of another, almost three quarters of a million dollars, I think we all take that with a lot of seriousness and our ratepayers' concerns. I appreciate the question that was asked by the commissioner about the pressure for the wells. There was a comment made by GSI about the travel time, and it's slowing down based on the number of wells, so I really appreciate that information. I wouldn't have known that otherwise, that you could do pressure with less wells and, you know, receive some of those benefits from it. So that helps us know as far as when we're talking, we keep circling back, I think, about the number of wells, what we need, maximum buildout. I see, as Councilmember Landrum said, our population is reduced, and maximum buildout could be 20 years from now. I think that the numbers for finance are very subjective in the scenarios that are presented. They're, you know, we would have applied for other grants and other funding, so I don't know that I agree with what that difference would be or wouldn't be as far as the costs related to water reclamation at this level with the IPR wells. That's just my opinion. The Ashhurst well field out in the Chorro Valley, I'm very familiar with from when I served on council before, because we were actually still utilizing those. And I would hope that we would, at the very least, look for opportunities for potential use for water in the future with those as far as irrigation and things. We would have to establish all the wells out there, but that being said, we do have a well field, and we have the pipes that are already running from there. So there is some pros to it, and if you're doing injection wells, you're increasing the water table. So, you know, the problem before was when it went before the 1.4, we always had the monitors in the creek, but if you're injecting water, then you're going to raise the table. So just my comments with that. There are five recommendations before council. We can take them as one group, or we can take them individually. What is councils, anyone? Take them as one whole one, or would you like them done individually?
I think that if none of us haven't, want to poll any of them to further discuss, I would say, let's just group them.
Thank you. Does anyone want to poll any of the five items, any of the council members? So with that, we are looking for a motion to approve items one through five, direct staff implementation of a phased approach, and approve the four amendments.
I would like to make that recommendation.
Thank you. So that's a motion?
Yes.
Thank you. I have a motion, and do I have a second?
Can I add a friendly amendment to that?
After I get...
Okay.
Thank you.
No, you're fine. I'll second it.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I would ask that we allow this after we, the subcommittee, the WRF subcommittee approves a letter that staff writes to the lending agencies and, you know, requesting that we
are able to do the minimum, if anything, on this proceeding. Am I making sense?
Are you looking to sync the language with the other three lending agency requirements of up to?
Yes, I'd like to clarify what the minimum is. I'd just like to see that in, I think it would be prudent for us to have that in writing. You know, we've heard that there's been conversations, but it would be nice to have it all in writing.
Councilmember Barton?
I'd like to hear from our staff and consultant.
Mr. Qualick?
Thank you for the question and the amendment. So I think that's doable, so long as we, like, subcommittee meets, you know, next week, and we can ask Dan to draft the letter, and you all can review it, or we could get it to them, and, you know, I assume we can get an answer in a couple of weeks.
That would be perfect.
Yeah.
Councilmember Barton? Would you accept that amendment?
I'll accept that.
Councilmember Ford?
I accept the amendment.
Thank you. And with that, I'd like to ask the city clerk for a roll call vote, please.
I'm sorry, so staff does have a question of what, is there some discretionary authority that the subcommittee is asking for? Or just as long as we get the letter, then we continue? Okay.
Well, we would like to approve the letter first, yeah.
Right. Okay.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Landrum?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
And Mayor Wicksum?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. And again, I would like to thank all of you. Thank you, Chair Beal, and all of the commissioners for your time and continued service. Thank you. With that, we're adjourned until our regular meeting at 5:30.
This project is very complicated. I think it's really, I am very impressed with the project.